I would like to start our August Board meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our roll call, Bob Cooney is here, Susan Garrett is here, Mark Donovan is here, Martha Majeski is here, Lori Getz is here. I'm so sorry.
Chris McClure.
Thank you. Chris McClure from T and M is here, and our Chief of Police is here. Announcement of our executive sessions, we had one on July 21st, 2022, and August 3rd, 2022, where we discussed potential litigation, personnel issues, and potential property acquisition. Moving on with our agenda, we have a presentation. Amelia Rayburn from the Chester County Domestic Violence Center. So Amelia, so that we can catch you on the recording, I'm going to ask you to use that microphone there. And I think you have to hold it, either shout into it or hold it as close as you possibly can.
All right, awesome. Is it picking me up, do you think?
Yeah, it sounds good.
Awesome, okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Amelia Rayburn, Rayburn hyphen Pazica. I am technically Phoenixville Borough, but I am right over the border from Schuylkill Township. And I just wanted to thank you all tonight for the partnership that we began in spring of 2021. There's a little brief overview in the packet, but as many of you know, in response to a local domestic violence-related homicide, we were getting some calls from the community, from individuals feeling that they wanted to do something to respond to this in a positive way. And so I connected with Martha and with the township and with your support, we were able to plant the Tree of Hope and Healing right out here on the municipal grounds, which I don't know if you've seen the change, but it is like so much bigger already. In the spring, it was flowering in beautiful pink flowers. And it has actually already made the impact that we were hoping that it would. The night that we planted it, there were families of local victims there who shared the impact that that had on their family and how important it was for them. But then unfortunately, one thing we've noticed over the past couple of years in this post-COVID world, you know, we predicted that domestic violence would be impacted by the pandemic, by this period of isolation. And we weren't sure how. And I'm in charge of our organizational data, and we were able to really look at things and parse out the data. And what we noticed is that domestic violence did not increase in the quantity of the violence occurring. We weren't seeing far more hotline calls. What we were seeing were far more calls to the police. And Schuylkill Township Police Department is one of our LAP program, LAP assessment participating police departments here in Chester County. When these trained police departments go on the scene of a domestic call, they do an assessment of 11 questions, and that questionnaire tells them if this individual is at increased risk for domestic violence homicide. And if so, they call our hotline right then and there and try and connect that victim with services. And what we saw was a 26% increase in high danger assessments. So we were seeing the severity and danger of domestic violence increasing. And in addition to that, we have seen a significant and steady increase in the number of domestic violence homicides across Chester County. And we are based all across Chester County as a county-serving organization, but we do have an office right here in the borough of Phoenixville on Church Street. And our outreach to the Phoenixville and greater Phoenixville community is so important to us because we know that this community is impacted. There is a heat map of our hotline calls and the clients that we see located in the packet. Now, I am going to admit, I included a typo. When I added the gradient to show the heat map, I accidentally swapped it. So it should be the darker end for the more calls and the lighter end for less calls. And I accidentally swapped it on my tools this afternoon before I printed it. And I didn't notice it until I printed everything out, so I do apologize for that error. But as you see, this community is one of the communities that we noted as one that has needed our increased outreach, which is why in 2019 we did open this full-time office space. But because of this response to domestic violence homicide that started here in Schuylkill Township and made such a significant impact, we saw those increased homicide rates. We saw additional homicides last year here in the greater Phoenixville community. And a family member of one of the victims, you know, a little while after we had planted the tree, shared with me, and I shared this with Martha, that he came to visit the tree on Father's Day. And it made a significant and positive impact on him. And he said that he felt the presence of his loved one when he came and visited. So we know that this tree continues to have that impact. Last October, we lit the tree in the evenings to shine every night as a beacon of hope for victims who we know are still living in violent homes so that they know that not only is the Domestic Violence Center here for them, but Schuylkill Township is here for them. They're leaders, they're elected officials. The people that are here to serve them are here for them and that they can reach out to any one of us for services. But this specific project actually inspired us to respond in similar ways to other local homicides this year. So we've expanded the Tree of Hope and Healing project into Kennett Square as well as Coatsville. So we have a tree right in front of the Kennett Square Borough Hall, and we also have a tree now in Hibernia Park in partnership with the county itself. And we are planning this October to continue this lighting of the trees, this Tree of Hope and Healing project that began here and has now expanded and, you know, brought hope and peace to so many families so far by lighting all of the trees this coming October. And so we are so excited to once again have your support. And I want to thank you so much for that support as we light this tree, this original Tree of Hope and Healing, on the same night as we light all of our trees and different spots all around Chester County in purple to really light up the night and help raise awareness all across the county. And I want to thank you all for really being the beginning of and the launching point for this amazing project that has really impacted so many families and so many community members. And I'm just really honored and humbled to have the opportunity to continue that outreach and awareness here in Schuylkill Township. So I do want to thank you all for that. And do you all have any questions for me about the tree, about the work that we're doing or the services that we provide?
Do you want to just summarize your services in case anyone watching might?
Absolutely. I am so glad to do that. So our services are available countywide, but we are located right here in the borough of Phoenixville, so we are accessible. And our services are wide-reaching, so we have everything from a 24-hour hotline for individuals who might be in crisis or just wanting to vent and share or learn more about what we can provide them. We have a legal team, a team of legal advocates, many of whom are bilingual. We also have Portuguese-speaking staff, which is really important because I know in the greater Phoenixville area, we have a lot of Portuguese-speaking community members. But we have a bilingual legal advocacy team who can kind of help survivors navigate the very confusing justice and legal process of obtaining protection orders, navigating criminal charges that might be pressed, custody, divorce, things of that nature. And we also have three full-time staff attorneys that can represent survivors free of charge, which is a really huge and important thing for our victim survivors here in Chester County. We have a 24-hour emergency crisis shelter for those who are fleeing a dangerous situation and in imminent danger and seeking safety, as well as a transitional shelter and a more long-term housing option with 13 three-bedroom townhomes and four one-bedroom apartments for families to get back on their feet. And all throughout that process, they have access to both our adult and children's counseling and caseworking. So we have counseling for children who are going through this and adults, support groups, and a licensed therapist on staff to help with individuals who might be dealing with trauma diagnoses or PTSD and things like that. And then my favorite department, which is what I help oversee, which is our education and prevention programming. So we provide education for teens, young people, and adults all around Chester County. So if you have a group of individuals that you would like to bring in some education to learn more about this issue and how they can help and support people in the community, that's what we do for free as a nonprofit. Everything we provide is completely free of charge to the community. So we are a resource that is accessible, that is right here in the community. And anybody who's watching, please feel free to reach out. Our number is 1-888-711-6270. Thank you so much. I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Amelia. And if there's anything that you need between now and the time of this event, just you have my number.
I do. We'll be in touch.
Okay.
We'll be excited. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Great work.
Thank you.
Okay, our regular business meeting. Of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors, July 6th, 2022 Business Meeting and the July 21st, 2022 Workshop Meeting. Acceptance of Reports, all departmental, committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of July 2022. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the Board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer's Report and Payment of Bills for the Period Ending July 31st, 2022. Consideration of Acceptance of the Treasurer's Report and Approval to Pay the Bills. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And I will turn that over to you, Lori.
Sounds good. So for the month ending July 31st, 2022, we had general fund balance of $5,062,252.45. Now, there's an asterisk here on the Treasurer's Report again because unfortunately, we did not receive the Tax Collector's monthly report in time, so we couldn't reconcile that account. So as with last month, that will be updated. So last month, I reported a general fund balance, but the accurate general fund balance from last month is $5,188,800. So that will be updated. Based on what we have, we have realized 32% of the revenue, but that will change once we get the Tax Collector's report, and about 42% of expenses. So we're right on target for this type of year. And the bills have been reviewed and are recommended for payment.
Any comments or questions from the Board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Two-minute reports, Board Liaisons. Bob, do you have anything?
Oh, it's good.
Okay, Susan, do you have anything? Mark, do you have anything? I don't either.
I didn't go to PRPC.
Okay. Lori?
I have very brief, I will be actually two minutes or less. The painting of the exterior of the building has become so good, as everybody noticed. It looks beautiful. We did a great job. And the work on the chimney, if anybody saw that happening on the historic building, that's also been completed. And both contractors did a fantastic job. So that went very smoothly, went very well. We are still working on the FEMA reimbursement process from Hurricane Ida. Just wanted to provide an update on that. We actually just had a call with our FEMA guy today. It's a really crazy process, like it is so time-consuming, but we're working through it. So yeah, we're not going to know probably this year if we're getting that money based on the length. This is like step one, so it's going to be a while. But we are still working on it. And then the last thing is, we did last month, we held a community meeting for the Route 23 sidewalk project, which went very well. We had about 10 residents in attendance and answered questions. And actually, the plans are all still sitting up over here, the diagrams that we showed everybody. So it went really well. The next step, we're moving on to the engineer. Gilmore and Associates is still handling this. They're holding individual property meetings with affected property owners along the Route 23 corridor there. So that's where we are, but we are moving along on that. We did get an extension on that grant, so we have time on that. That's it for me.
All right. Chief?
The only thing I have was my monthly activity report to review. Do you have any questions? Monthly office report.
So one of the questions that had come up during the EAC meeting this month is they were asking about deer-related issues. Do you delineate them in any way, like whether there's property damage or an injury? Or how, when you say deer-related, what does that include?
With the way we document them, for accidents, a lot of times, if it involves a deer, we'll have to go into the body of the report and actually read the reports. The report I sent to Lori showed 141 deer-related reports over a three-year period. To go through to figure out what the exact details were, we have to read.
Oh, okay, okay. So you don't, it's not easy to delineate.
I have all those categories in my records management system.
I don't, I don't think they, were you part of this conversation, Susan?
I've been part of some of them. I don't know if I was part of that.
Okay. So one of the things that they wanted to do is they're trying to assess whether we need to have some sort of deer management program in the township. And one of the things that the Game Commission recommends is that you have to see if you really have a problem. So they wanted to take like the reports that you have to see if they're increasing or if they're decreasing or if they're staying the same or whatever. And that's kind of why they requested that from you. Is there anything that may be going forward that we should delineate this to help with that or no?
Yeah, our major concern is obviously accidents about the deer. So that's one of the things that we'll focus on is the accidents to see whether or not we're back over the rest of the year to pull those and see where we're at with those.
But that's the only way you can do that, huh? Gosh. Okay.
I think just overall deer-related incidents is probably going to be a big enough barometer for our EAC to talk about it. Yeah, so I don't think, I don't think we need to break it down any further.
You don't think, okay, okay.
One of the things I did do when moving forward is what the categories in our records management system, if there's, say, a pedestrian gets struck by a vehicle, you would have what we call auto tag or vehicle versus pedestrian. What we did was in our records management system is you created a category, vehicle versus deer.
Oh, okay.
You could be able to search and move forward.
Okay.
To track it backwards, yeah. Okay.
One of the things that we may not be capturing are unreported accidents where the deer travels off the road. I know from hiking along 23, it's pretty common to find a corpse where, you know, the deer ran 50 yards into the woods and died. So whatever this number is, is probably shy of what the actual incidents are. I know with my past, I worked many years ago with one of the archery groups, providing deer management in the township. What we used to have that was a big issue was Valley Forge Park didn't cull or herd. So a tremendous amount of deer were traveling through the township, many with collars that indicated they were tagged in Valley Forge. They now cull the deer, and the numbers, I think, dropped off for a while. And the deer management that we had in the township stopped. I think we had a team back then, so that was terminated. And recently, and I just spoke to actually Lead Lead Better a couple days ago, and he said, "What's going on?" He said, "The deer numbers are going through the roof again, and in our neighborhood, I see it as well, but I think they ebb and flow." You know, you'll see where chronic wasting or other, you know, diseases will spread through. The numbers will drop, but then like the fox population will climb back up again. So I think we're actually on the climb again.
Okay. So anyway, I think that this is really good information for our EAC to have because it's one of the things that's recommended by the Game Commission, you know, to see if you have a problem and your police are one of the first places that you can go to to get that information.
Well, the Game Commission also, it's interesting, I think this is the 5C and 5D area. I forget what the numbers are. They might have changed them. But you can tell by the allotment of tags where the highest populations are. And for a while, it's been unlimited amount of tags available for those in the 5C and 5D region. So they have some records of, I guess, what, how many licenses are bought that will also factor in maybe to where the highest density is in the state and county.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. That'll be good information for them to have to see if we need to have some sort of deer management, you know, deer management plan in the township. Does anyone have any more questions for Chief? Okay. The Township Engineer?
You need me. The Township Engineer's Office continues to receive multiple subdivision development applications as well as stormwater disturbance applications. We are in the process of reviewing those with several.
Can you get closer to the microphone? Sorry.
Sure, no, I'm sorry. So multiple, many of them are scheduled for appearance before the Board of Supervisors or the Planning Commission in the upcoming months. In addition, the Paul Newman Drive Drain Project is continuing to move towards construction. Currently, the estimates provided by the contractor are late August, early September. The majority of the predominant issue here is the primitive materials. During this process, we have received two requests for substitutions of materials for some modifications to existing, to proposed structures in order to shallow them, which resulted in a slight credit to the township and reduction in cost. We also received a proposal to modify the outfall structure at the bottom of the system with an Ajax system, which the Township Engineer decided was not the best solution. And actually resulted in a slight increase on the overall cost of the project after taking into consideration the credits for the other structures. So we have additional information on the lending contractor intent to start construction. We'll convey that to the Board of Supervisors. Otherwise, we have the MS4 permit, which we are preparing for submission in September. We continue collection on that and preparation of documents.
Can you tell us what was substituted, what materials? Was it plastic for concrete or?
So the request for modification was to shallow the inlets in order to provide less excavation, which ultimately decreases the cost of fabrication and installation of the structure as well as decreasing the potential for the independent rock as part of the construction. So the two of those combined resulted in a net decrease in the cost of the structures.
As far as performance goes, they'll do what we need with volume and?
Yes, we, you did make sure that insurance was provided, that there would still be a drop structure which would provide energy dissipation as it moved out of the town areas.
So are they not going to start until they receive all of their supplies?
These were limited to four main structures, so the balance of the project is still, they're still in pursuit of procuring it. These represent a fairly small part of the project.
Okay.
The rest will be a broad project.
Okay. So they're still not going to start until they receive everything?
These are kind of in the midsection of the project, so it may, it shouldn't delay it much more than it would have normally.
Okay.
But we don't have any further time after that.
Yeah, I know. I think we just want to make sure that the road is closed for the least amount of time.
Yes.
So we're not closing the road and nothing's happening because we're waiting on, I don't know, a left-handed widget or something like that, something dumb, so.
We have made it very clear that access needs to maintain as much as possible and, you know, like that, if there's a hand before they.
Okay, okay, good, good. That's great. That's awesome. And any questions from the Board? Any public comment or questions? Okay, moving on. Board Discussion Items, Old Business. A Motion to Replace Supervisor Donovan as Liaison to the Phoenixville Regional Planning Commission with Supervisor Joanne. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the Board? Any comments or questions from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. New Business. Consider Approval of Articles of Agreement to Establish the Chester County Emergency Response Commission. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Lieutenant?
I'll spare you the long legal document that accompanies that. I'll give you the Cliff Notes version of that. For over 20 years, we've operated under a memorandum of understanding with the 27 to 28 municipalities that are involved with our regional emergency response team. Couple issues with that, keeping it a memorandum of understanding, is that we're not a separate standalone entity, so we can't own vehicles. We can't get insurance. We can't do a lot of things that we would rather do, which, I don't know if the Board is aware, but there's a big boxy, it looks like a fire truck, that Schuylkill has registered and is insured by Schuylkill Township. Tridifern has one, Downingtown has two. They're kind of spread around the municipalities. That's part of this, that if we incorporate this resolution, we'll be able to spread the cost of the insurance, actually register them to the team, and the insurance will be spread amongst all 28 municipalities instead of just the select five, which it is now. The other part of this is that the increased cost is minimal, to the best of my knowledge, especially if you factor in the fact that we wouldn't be paying all the insurance for that vehicle. It may even be a wash for Schuylkill Township. We would also bring onboard $10 million of liability insurance for each occurrence, each time we're called out. Currently, we have zero liability insurance. That hasn't really impacted us that much because we've, not, I would have knocked on it, but we've done a really good job of successfully, safely getting out of some pretty hairy situations. But I know for a fact that East Vinson had to shell out close to $15,000 to $20,000 when Chief Williams had to, we were sued unsuccessfully, but just the cost of legal representation fell on East Vinson. And none of us think that that is an equitable arrangement. Mr. Brennan was instrumental. He's one of the five solicitors. There's five municipalities that are jumping on initially. Tridifern, Kennett, Schuylkill, Downingtown, and East Vinson. It wasn't because of any other reason other than we own the vehicles, number one. And trying to get 28 municipalities moving in the same direction at the same time, we thought would be a little bit difficult. So the resolution is worded such that the five of us, well, Tridifern's already approved theirs. I just got a text message that Kennett just approved theirs. Most of the meetings are tonight across the county. We'll then incorporate, we'll go out to the other townships and have them incorporate into it. For the, perfectly, logistically, the resolution contains, it allows them to still operate under the MOU for up to a year before they, can we bring them all onboard? I've been doing this a long time. I don't see a downside to this at all. It's a win across the board. Where the liability alone, without anything else, is a huge thing. And I mentioned this back, way back when we were in the infancy of developing the resolution. I had a conversation with EJ, and he just, he went for his checkbook. He says, "Where do I, where do I write the check?" He says, "Because that's all of our biggest fear because that's a bottomless well, and you don't want to, you don't want to step in that." So all five of the solicitors of the original townships that are going to be hopefully adopting this have vetted this agreement back and forth. Like Lori can tell you, I don't know how many times, until we have it to the point now where I think we have a pretty polished document. Mr. McClure, if you, I don't know if he, Mr. Brennan passed that on to you or?
No.
Okay, all right. So I'm open to any questions anybody has.
Any questions from the Board? Any public questions? Any public questions? There's been a motion and a second. No comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on. Consider approving Civic Plus proposal dated July eighteenth, 2022, for the web design and hosting services in the amount of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars for year one and four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for year two. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any, Lori, do you want to comment on this? I know we discussed this at our workshop meeting.
Yep. So this is the official proposal that they put together, includes everything that we reviewed at the meeting. Without the, I did not include the logo design, because you sent me the other company that I think is a, I think that's a great way to go. So, so that's the avenue that we'll go for that. And I didn't add on, we always have the option later to add additional features if we want to. So this includes all of the things that are included that we reviewed at the workshop meeting.
Good.
And we can establish the timeline, so we can approve it now and then, because I explained to them, I was like, it's budget, it's coming up on budget season, we might not be able to dive into this right away. This locks in our price, and we can set our project team and set our timeline as we feel appropriate.
Awesome.
Good deal.
Yeah. I think this is something that needs to be done.
They come very, very highly recommended in Chester County, so it's amongst the municipalities.
And the samples that you showed us, I thought were, were really great.
Yeah. This should help with avoiding a complete redesign again in a few years.
Absolutely.
Because it'll stay up to date throughout.
Yep.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
The only question on that, I would say, is would you like to pay that out of the ARP funds?
Yes, I thought, I thought, I thought that's what we, uh.
That was what we discussed, I just want to confirm.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion on that?
No.
Okay.
That's okay.
Okay. Yeah.
Great.
I thought we already agreed to that, so, okay. All right. Number three. Authorization to advertise the public hearing for the Comcast Cable Franchise Agreement renewal on September seventh, 2022. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? So, um, we've been working on this for years. I'm stunned that it's taken this long. I think we even have grant money to pay for this too, don't we?
Didn't we get grant?
Oh, no, never mind.
No, that's something different.
That was the other, that was the other, um, never mind.
Yeah, this is just the standard process to renew the cable franchise agreement, and this is, the public hearing is a formality that's required by the FCC. It'll really just be a listening session if any residents want to comment on Comcast's customer service or anything like that. I mean, our hands are a little bit tied with what we can and can't do. And generally, Cohen Law Group has been retained by the township as they handle this for so many municipalities. I mean, they're really the experts in this, and generally end up getting the maximum benefits for each township that are permitted under the law. So this is just the next step. And then I expect we'll probably have the final agreement in the next couple of months to approve, so.
Okay. All right. Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Number four. Discussion to set public hearing date for Act one sixty-seven Stormwater Management Model Ordinance and Authorization to Advertise the Hearing. I'll make that motion.
Well, we need to talk about.
I was just going to say, we need a date.
Yeah, so I included this on here because we discussed it at the workshop, and it was decided that we wanted to hold a public hearing so that residents could discuss it. We're already having a public hearing on September seventh, so we could schedule it for that date. That would at least give an opportunity for us if we get questions from the public before we have to adopt it in October. So September seems like a logical time to host the public hearing if we wanted to, and we're already doing one, so we could hold it at the regular business meeting.
So my only question is, if there's any changes to it, do we have to hold a second public hearing?
No, the public hearing isn't technically required. We are doing it.
Okay. Just because we've always done it.
Totally transparent, because we've always done it, and.
Okay. All right.
So, yeah. And there probably won't be changes.
Okay.
To be honest, it's already been.
Most of it, most of it's mandated from the state and county, so we can't change much anyway. So they, we have like three or four blanks we fill in.
But we, and we can use the public hearing to make the selections on our end of which, if we go stricter than the, than the model.
The questions that, that Paul had said we need to answer.
Before we finalize that language and you adopt it in October.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, let me rephrase that then. Authorization to advertise the public hearing date for the Act one sixty-seven Stormwater Management Model Ordinance.
For September.
Hearing for September seventh, 2022. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Did you get what you needed?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Authorization to advertise for equipment and snow removal bids for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
For winter twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
I know, should this, yeah, I was just going to say for winter?
It's just the twenty twenty.
Okay, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Well, the only question I have is that every year, it seems like we only get the one bid. And is there a way to, I feel like there's something happening there that we can't really account for. But is there a way to reach out to other companies to ask for bids?
Like solicit bids?
I mean, I think there's some kind of.
She has like soliciting bids.
Yeah, I think the reason that we generally only get one is because not a lot of companies want to do snow removal anymore, and we combine our bid. And that's something that we can look in the future at separating. I talked to PennDOT about this, actually, when, when I discussed with them the issue that we had with the bid being too short last year. That's not something I would recommend tackling this year, but something that we could look at next year. There's nothing inherently wrong with it. I had a whole, I, I discussed with PennDOT the way that we bid it. They review it every year. There's nothing inherently wrong with how we're doing it. We don't, there isn't a whole lot of competition. I think it's primarily, again, because people don't want to, companies that will rent us equipment and labor don't want to be tied to doing snow removal.
We, we've heard that there might be some agreement among companies to only go after certain business and to leave it to others. So I would just be questioning of that, but if that's what you conclude, that's fine.
Yeah, that, that's, that would be my thought. I don't know of any, like, other people not wanting to bid on it because they feel like it's a territory thing.
Yeah, because this company gets that one, we're not going to go after that, but we get this one, and so you.
And they're not going to go after that one because we're not going after theirs.
Gotcha.
So I just want to make sure that's not happening.
If it is happening, there's not really a whole lot we could, like, we're not encouraging that.
No, but I mean, like, if I were going to put a roof on my house and that was happening to me, I would make efforts to go out and make sure, hey, is there another roof company? What would you do? And so I guess I just want to make sure, because obviously that would inflate prices if that were actually happening.
Gotcha.
So I just want to make sure that you're vetting that that's not happening.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we, we posted out there, I mean, I, I can look into other ways to circulate the bid. I mean, it gets posted everywhere that it's, that we're required to. And I know it has been, we only ever get one bid.
I think one year, and it was the first or second year I was a supervisor. We got a, a second bid.
Yeah.
And it was almost two hundred thousand dollars more than the other one.
Yeah. Like I said, I think a very easy way to encourage more bids would be to split them up and do the equipment rental, and then they do the snow removal. Now, the risky run with that is not getting any snow removal bids, and then we'd be in real trouble. So I think that's a lot of the reason, because we just have too small of a crew. And I actually, I dealt with this at my last municipality too. Companies don't want to do snow removal anymore. I mean, we had a crew of sixteen people and still couldn't handle the snow and tried to bid it out, and no one, no one wanted it. So that is a potential consequence of splitting the bids up. I think that's some of the reason we haven't done that here before, is because we, we can't risk not having anybody to do snow.
Yeah, then I wouldn't suggest doing that. I'm not suggesting that. I just want to make sure that we're thoughtful about how we're doing this, because.
Absolutely.
Would you share? Like, I think we have an obligation to make sure that we're getting proper pricing. And since we've heard that in the past, I want to make sure that we're not just letting it continue to happen.
Yeah, absolutely. Would there be any benefit to us? I mean, we don't usually do this on PennBid. Would that help to get the word out more?
It, it may increase the range and the number of applicants that we see the advertisement. PennBid sends automated messages to anyone within, that fits the specific criteria within the geographic region.
Right.
Compared to a newspaper advertisement, you may get larger range. It may not necessarily result in more bids.
Right.
But more people will see it, and I think, I think the more people that see it is always a good thing, even if they don't bid on it.
Is there a cost to that? How does, well, I could figure that out later, but.
So PennBid is free for the municipality. The costs for operating it are paid on behalf of the winning contractor.
Ah, okay. Okay, so maybe that's something we could try.
Sure.
Another avenue to advertise it, at least.
So where do we advertise it now?
The newspaper, and the newspaper, the website. Those are the only places we're required to.
Okay. Yeah, I like the idea of putting in a bump head bid.
Can't hurt.
Yeah, it can't hurt. I definitely don't want to separate them. I don't want to risk if you don't have them.
Yeah.
Not saying that.
It is something I talked to our Liquid Fuels rep about, about potentially doing that, but it is, it is a risk if, you know, you don't get anybody. So I'll look into it.
So I'm just, I'm just, I'm just going to throw this out here. If we, if we do separate it, like, right now, this is August. If we were thinking about separating it for the following year, if we did this next year, if we separated them in June and we found that we got no one to do snow removal, do we not, can we not accept the bid for the equipment rental? And then in August, bid it out like this again? Am I making sense? Put the bids out in June and separate them. If we don't get anything for snow removal, but we get something for equipment rental, can we just say, oh, we're not going to do the equipment rental one, and then we're going to, in August, put the bids out for this?
Um, I'd have to look into that, but we might be obligated to.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. Okay.
Because if we have a low bid.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. So we can't say we changed our mind.
Yeah.
(laughing). Okay, I'm just asking. We usually don't, so, you know.
And that can also damage your relationship.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. I, you know, it was just a thought, so, okay. All right.
Yep.
Do we have a motion and a second?
No. First and a second. We have first and a second. We can find out about it.
Oh, do we? Yeah.
Um, any more comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Authorization to advertise the change in meeting time for the Historical Commission from seven PM to six PM for the remainder of 2022. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Number seven. Consider approval of additional 2022 road program work as recommended by the Township Roadmaster. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Lori, would you like to comment on what this is?
Yes. So Nick has provided me with a list of a couple additional projects that he'd like to do this year. These are not new projects. These are things that he plotted out at the beginning of the year, but he waits to see where we land with pave, with snow removal, with paving, with all of that, to see where we are about this time of year with the budget. So he has, we pared down a little bit of the, of his planned projects, again, because of costs, but he's identified three, one on Jogalo Road, one on Winterberry, and one on, and an intersection at Drummers and Revolutionary that he's looking to redo. This all fits within the budget, even with the transfer of Liquid Fuels money that we have to do that we talked about last time to correct that bid mistake. We're still within the budget.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Consider appointing Kevin, Kevin Hyde as an alternate member of the Skookle Township Zoning Hearing Board for a term to expire January 2025. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? All those in favor? Aye. Resolutions and ordinances. Adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty-two dash eighteen, decommissioning of the Freedoms Foundation at Valley Forge Wastewater Treatment Plant. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Just a brief comment on this would be nice, Lori. I know it's complicated.
This is just the formal document that allows us to submit the plan that the Freedoms Foundation has completed. We have to submit it on their behalf to the DEP. It's just the next step in the process, but we have to adopt it by resolution.
And the end goal with them is?
They are decommissioning their private wastewater treatment plant and connecting to a private connection to the Valley Forge.
They got the green light.
Yes.
The Valley Forge, great.
Yep, yep. And that still stays private. No public can connect to it. The Freedoms Foundation still owns that.
Right.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty-two dash nineteen, authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement for the.
It's a really long name. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement for the purpose of joining with other municipalities as a member of the Chester County Emergency Response Commission. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? All those in favor? Aye. Is this a discussion item?
Yep.
Okay. Under subdivision and land development, the zoning hearing board application, three thirty-five Paulings Road. The applicant is seeking a special exception to three seventy dash one dash three point A. One, aye? Okay.
So this is included on here. This is a new application that we received to the zoning hearing board. And the reason that I am including this is so that, because the board has the option when it comes to zoning hearing board applications of, you can take a neutral position or you can choose, as you've done in the past with certain items, to send counsel on the township's behalf to oppose an application of the zoning hearing board. So going forward, when we get new applications, I'll be including them on the agenda so the board has an opportunity to consider it before it goes before the zoning hearing board. This particular application is kind of an, an easy one. So you have the choice whether to stay neutral or to send counsel to oppose it. The applicant has already gone before the zoning hearing board once before. So this is three thirty-five Paulings Road. And what they, they had a favorable decision from the zoning hearing board back in November 2021, granting their use of wholesale vehicle sales in a space that they rent at three thirty-five Paulings Road. Unfortunately, when they went to the state to get their vehicle sales license, Pennsylvania didn't like the wording. So instead of it saying wholesale vehicle sales, it needs to say vehicle sales. So that's why they are coming back to the zoning hearing board.
Yeah.
There were, the last time it was, before the zoning hearing board, it was, they were granted the special exception, and there was no opposition from any of the residents or any neighbors.
And we said we didn't oppose it before, so nothing's really changing except for the wording.
And you don't need, you do not need to make a motion. There can just be a consensus. If you're, if you're choosing to stay neutral, there can just be a consensus. If you were intending to send counsel, I would ask for a motion, but.
We didn't do it before. I don't see what's the point.
That's a minor.
Okay.
Minor change.
Yep, that's fine. Neutral. Neutral. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, additional business. Discussion on agenda items for the upcoming workshop meetings. We're not having one this month, right?
Nope, we are not having an August workshop. Nothing has come up, so for September, I had, I thought we could talk about potential building plans now that we had a meeting this morning with an architect to kind of get an idea of what our next steps should be, so that could be a topic for September, which would be helpful to plan out some items for the 2023 budget.
Budget.
And I thought that perhaps at the September meeting, because on the September business agenda, I will likely include a discussion to set budget hearing dates, so at the September workshop meeting, we could discuss if the board has any special priorities for the 2023 budget. That would be a good time to talk about that.
September 15?
18th, maybe? Or, what time?
The third, Thursday, the 15th.
The 15th, yes.
Well, that's our workshop date.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, because the first...
Well, because September 1st is, unless that doesn't work, we could change, we could also change that now.
It just seems early, but, yeah, no.
It does, yeah, because September 1st is, yeah.
What time is that?
Uh, 7.
7.
It does feel, it does feel early.
It is.
It's actually just the week after, because our business meeting is actually on...
On the 7th. It's a week later.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's weird, actually.
It's the earliest it can be.
Yeah, they're not usually only one week apart. That's, that's okay.
It's fine.
Yeah, I think that's a good topic. Does anyone have anything else they want to discuss?
Sorry, what topic did you suggest?
Building renovations and potential plans for that, including that in the 2023 budget, and then any other budget priorities the board has for 2023 planning. And of course, if anything else comes up between, between now and then.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Announcements. My computer just died. There weren't any.
I didn't have any.
Okay. Like, I didn't see any, but then, I didn't, I didn't...
No, there weren't any.
Okay, good. Any public comment? On any topic? No? No public comment? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Look at that time.